I'm from Commerce City Chamber. My name is Maria Farber-Hulk and I am the board president of Commerce City Chamber. And you guys have probably seen me, I also wear a hat and press off and it's kind of fire and media type of relations.
I'm gonna get my face in there.
But I do want to start out by inviting all the candidates for all being there. And I do want to let you know that all of the candidates were, it wasn't the only that was sent down, they were all invited, so there are usually a couple spots open, but I wanted to let you know the invitation was sent down to all candidates. And I want to start out by welcoming or thanking our board, our main cash flow members. We've got William Prue, where's William? We've got Terri. Terri's also going to be our helping with monitoring and our timekeeper. And then we also have June Yoder, who is the Chamber of Mayor.
Hiya.
Alright, and then I'll give her just Terri. Just go over just the format and the rules of the form tonight. And then our lady's going to be sharing all the questions that you guys will have to answer. Again, thank you everyone, and Terri, come on.
Thank you Maria. The format of tonight is we're going, we have all the candidates sitting in the order that their names appear on the ballot. And we're going to have each candidate give a two-minute opening statement, which will be timed, and I'll get to the timing in the moment. Then we have collective questions from all of you, and we will have our lady bring the questions up. And if you have, if you want all the candidates to answer the question, hopefully one of the lots of questions directed toward two, three, or four, only those candidates will answer the question. At the end, we will have all the candidates come back up and do a closing statement. I have with me a tablet that will have the timing, I'm actually going to sit right here in front of the candidates. And for your information, candidates, the green light will go, so with two minutes, the blue light will go on at one minute, the yellow light will come on at a minute and a half, and the red light comes on at two minutes. And at that time, if you see the red light, we're asking you to wrap up your statement, even if you're not done with your thought. So, thank you very much, Maria.
So, each candidate will just welcome to the panel.
Okay, so we'll start at this end. Steve Douglas is not here yet, so Renee Bullock.
You can just use the microphone, just adjusting because there is a little bit here in back here.
Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Renee Bullock. I am a candidate for mayor in Commerce City. I'm a former resident of Commerce City. I started out in Commerce City teaching aerobics, and I was the first personal trainer at the rec center in Commerce City. I have been with Commerce City in different positions for at least 20 years. I am on the board of Senior Hub, which is an organization outside Commerce City. I'm also on the board of the Wildlife Refuge, National Wildlife Refuge, Saturday Beach Regional Greenway, South Adams County Water Sanitation. I'm one of the board members. My claim to fame, or why I'm running, is because I was on the city council for 14 years in Commerce City. I feel that I have a knowledge of the city, I have a knowledge of what goes on in the city, and I feel like I could be best served here as your mayor. I would love to have your support, I would love to have you go to your neighbors and friends and ask for the support for me as mayor. I don't want to use up the full two minutes, because maybe they'll give me three at the end. Okay, she said no. Okay, yeah, any questions that come up in the next round of questioning, I feel that you see that I am best qualified to answer those questions. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Crowley. And I was raised here, I graduated from Adam City here a long time ago, currently at Downey Port City. I was on the planning commission for over 20 years. My claim to fame is the whole reunion, I was part of the whole reunion process when we were developing reunion. I have served on the school board, I have also served on the Colorado Special Olympics Board for the L E T R. I'm married, I have a daughter who is 17. I would love to be your mayor, I am humbled just to be in here in your presence today. I feel I have a lot to offer, and then I can answer any questions if you'd like to talk with me afterwards. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rocky Teager. I was raised in Derby Fall Rally back in 1954. First room in there. We lived there for about eight years until Commerce City came into the picture. It was just about one block from the Rocky Mountain Arsenal. I had to see a whole lot of shaking and moving back in the day, there was an 70 earthquake and Shelby B. Polk was pumping all the poison down with the dam. Anyway, I went through the school system and the first job was at, second job, I guess, was at Safeway Stores Incorporated. That was back in 1972. Mostly in the transportation department. I'm still there today. Basically, got all the Commerce City and asking at the head of the volunteer work for me. I needed something to do, so I retired from Safeway, but I wasn't going to retire till I had something to do. Anyway, I ended up getting a bag for city council, so here I am. Anyway, after I started working for Safeway, I was there for a couple of years, and soon as I got the page, I signed up with the South Adams County Volunteer Fire Department. That's been pretty much my life for, well, for 42 years. We went to the officer's line and all command positions and built our own hazmat team and we learned a lot about taking care of hazardous materials and stuff. Built a lot of firefighting at refineries and stuff over the years. That's back when Conical, Asnerly was there. I sure appreciate Sunquark for buying them out, because once they bought them out, it changed the day, we started cleaning things up. I'm still working to be now, but here we got the right people. And what happens?
You got a long break. You went to school with your brother Rick.
I did.
Yes.
1966, you graduated.
You've been around here a long time too.
Good evening, I'm Rich Tridio, I'm the board three, writing the candidate. I lived in Colorado all my life, born and raised. Lived in Commerce City since 2008. My wife and I chose Commerce City because we saw the potential in a growing community. We felt just the desire to come out to an area that was growing and soon to be something great. We have three beautiful daughters, and we just wanted to come out to an area that was up and coming to be able to raise them and get them a fresh start. Worked for a local trucking company here in Commerce City, been working there for a while, so I'm on the roads all day long, I see what goes on throughout our city, I see, you know, the potential for growth and everything that we offer here to do in upcoming families. I'm running for city council because, not that I have a political background, but I'm a people person, and I see that people need change in their lives. I see just their desire to move on from old ways. I see their desire to just be in a community where we have each other's like back, you know, where we can just be a family, one big family together. I've been in the city long enough to get a feel for just a separation through North and South Commerce City. I would love for us to bring that together to unite us as one healthy community. I believe I have a lot to offer to people, because I'm a resident of Commerce City, I love Commerce City, I love my family, I love everybody around me as if they were my own family. I've talked to a lot of people around Commerce City, I know what the people want and desire, I think I could help with that. I just, I thank you for the opportunity to be here, I'm very blessed, my family's been very blessed, I feel like it's my opportunity to make a change. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is David Diop. I've been living in Commerce City, especially in the reunion, since 2017. And I'm excuse for my accent, I have a French accent, but you can stay the way. Yes. So, I am a small business owner, and at the same time, I am a middle graduate technical college advisor or member for culinary. And as a small business owner, since I moved here, I have seen a lot of problems. I think we need more businesses here, and I'm the guy who, I really know how to bring the business, I know how to make a world, and I have three successful businesses, and I want to bring more business here, especially in Ward Four, small business. And also, I know how to really make this world, that's why I'm running for city council. And I know the challenges, and we're going to do this together, and wish you the best luck, and we're going to change it. That's what we really need. Thank you so much for coming here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Susan Noble, and I'd actually like to ask a question of all of you before we start. How many people in the room are members of the Chamber of Commerce? Rachel, hand it. Okay, so we have about three in the audience, and, and over there is four. And how many people live in Ward Four in the audience?
Where is exactly Ward Four? Where is Ward Four?
Oh, Ward Four is east of Chambers and east of Second Creek.
So Karen, where is Ward Four?
Ward, mm-hmm. Do you know your ward?
I don't know, I'm a councilwoman.
I'm a city councilperson, and I've been on the city council for four years. It has been the honor of my life, and this is what I promise I will continue to do, and that I have done. This is two things. I will put people above spectacle interest, and I will also ensure that every decision I make is based on our motto. Does it make Commerce City a quality community for a lifetime? If I can't answer yes to that, then I'm not going to vote for it. And that is what I have done for the last four years. It matters to me that we have clean air, it matters to me that we have clean water, it matters to me that our kids have someplace safe to play, that they have places to go for entertainment and fun. Oh, yes, absolutely. All of us on the city council would like nothing more than to have as much retail as possible in the North End in particular, and we are also a cogponent of everything that happens in the South End, so don't think otherwise, I want to make sure you understand that. It matters, Commerce City matters to us, it matters to me. Thank you so much.
Good evening, thank you all for coming tonight, I greatly appreciate that. My name's Ryan Kiefer, I'm running for a city council at large here. My wife and I moved here a few years ago with the intent of raising our family, and my daughters actually do, and I'm waiting today, so I'm excited about that. I want to have the right place for my daughter to grow up here. And my wife and I are very excited about showing that we can do that, and that was the reason I started down this path. I'm currently on the North Arrangement of District One, resident and told board directors. I started there to try to start fixing things, and I found there were difficulties in doing that. Grounding got much more involved with politics here locally and saw that there's a lot that can be done. So, do know, I've decided a lot, we discussed a lot, if I should spend the time to do it, and we decided I did, and so it's what I'm running for city council. There's a lot I can do for you guys, and I represent, I'm not just one person, I'm one special group, and I do understand the importance of that. It's not my job to have my own personal opinion and only push that, it's my job to understand what you guys need, what you guys want, and my job to represent you in that. And Capitol Arts, I represent all of you, so come to City here. And I want to do that. I listen to you, I want to talk to you, I want to hear what you guys need and what's I'm there for. As for my own personal things that I would like to push forward, I think we have a lot to do in the sense of issue boards, businesses, we have an issue bringing in businesses, attracting them and keeping them. We also have a lot of places where we get overrun in areas that are especially logistic, I guess is the easiest way to say that. So, I have a plan that lines one personal bit, but I think we do a lot of good. The long one has pushed forward, we have discipline, it's vibrant to everyone in the district, and it has shown to be very, very successful, and it's at no cost to the taxpayer. Dave fixes a lot of problems that we have, a lot of other things, and it also brings revenue for the city, they can do a lot for us. I look forward to hearing your questions this evening and answering any questions I can. Thank you so much.
Good evening, my name's Craig Hurst, I'm running for reelection for the city council at large. I've been on city council since May of 2019. I was appointed in May of 2019 and then elected a couple months later. My key focuses on city council are going to continue to be public safety. I think public safety is a key piece that we need to improve on in Commerce, not just in the South, in the North as well. I work on a daily basis with the Colorado State Patrol, I'm honorary colonel on the Colorado State Patrol, and I hear lots of the best practices that are being used statewide and around locations all over Colorado, all over the country, and I think that's a key piece to us. I think moving forward, we have to have a balanced economic approach that focuses on small business, but also using the airport as a key economic driver so we can continue to build opportunities for all here. And then I really care about our children. My two daughters go to South, I'm running the street here, we've been pretty close, but I've been on the, I'm the president of the Capital Free Foundation at 27K, because I think our kids deserve to have great schools, and take pride in where they go to school, and also just having positive work in families. I think our community has so much potential with the young workforce here. One of the things I enjoyed the most over the last four years is the board and commission. I served on it with several council members here. We have such a diverse group of great people here with such a diversity of talents that volunteer to help our city move forward, and that's what was one of the greatest joys, is just getting to interview all those folks and hear their passion for our city that we're here. And so, I hope to serve you for the next four years, be accessible to everybody, and you know, I love Commerce City today as it is. There are things we need to work on, but if we didn't have Commerce City during COVID, the whole state falls apart, the whole Rocky Mountain region falls apart. Commerce City is where your food starts, where your fuel starts, where your work starts. So, I'm proud, I represent you, thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Craig Kidd here, currently the appointed council member at large. One thing I will say, and I think what most people have known of me, is that I hate politics with a passion. Politics to me feels that it is a, if you're using it in a sense of that it is for your own selfishness, your own selfish agenda, and not for the people within Commerce City, there's a problem, and that's what really sickens me to this core, to my core. Prior military, joined the Air Force back in 98, was 22 years served in the Air Force myself, veterans being a whole lot to me altogether. My only agenda is to serve the people, to provide that full-on transparency, whether it's positive or negative. I have not received zero campaign contributions unlike some others that have. For me, I want to be able to serve the people, that includes those in the South, the fact that we have issues with oil and gas, the fact that we do have homelessness issues that we got to figure out, the fact that we have metro districts up here that are screwing us essentially at this point. But I just want people to know as far as where I stand, what I stand for. You will not, you will not see anything coming from me that serves my own interests, because what matters to me is each and every single one of you. Whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent, I am here to serve you guys, I'm here to go ahead and be that voice, to be able to put that information out there so you guys are aware as far as everything else is going on. That is all. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Charles Dukes, and I want to thank my wife for coming here, my P. D. Tha, thank you for being here. Me, I'm running for city council at large out here in Commerce City. My wife and I, we moved out here eight years ago because we love this area. We have three amazing children and we love the opportunity to live in Commerce City. Throughout my career, I advocated for education equity throughout the state of Colorado. I've served at the Department of Education and Policy, I've served as the director of early childhood, a director of education policy at the city and county of Denver, but also not just in practice, not just in policy, I worked in practice as well. I've been able to work as a district director in both of our largest two urban school districts in Colorado, Denver Public Schools and Aurora Public Schools. I've also worked in philanthropy, where I've been able to help nonprofit organizations provide good funding so youth can have their voice and make change in the community. My experience is not just in policy, but also I've been able to have an opportunity to be appointed by the governor, Paulus, to serve on the Carro Mesa University Board Justies. I've been mayor or appointee for the Denver Early Childhood Council for the city and county of Denver. Here locally, I've served on the comprehensive plan, Commerce City Comprehensive Plan 2025, and I also served at a quality community foundation as well as the state school across the district. My diverse experience has given me a unique perspective, and that's why I wanted to list that out, because I am here because I love Commerce City and we need more amenities, that's why I'm running. We need places for our loved ones to gather, we need public safety, we need opportunities to actually grow our city. Because the reality is, why I go through all my experiences, if the city's not growing, balanced growth, city's dying. And right now, we've got to be careful, like if we're not growing balanced, we're going to be hopped over by others. That's all we want. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Now, we're going to move into our question and answer portion, and I'm going to ask for our lady council member to come up.
Hello, everyone. First question for the mayor, that you have time to answer the question. The first one is, what are your ideas to bring the communities North and South together?
The question is, what is my ideal for bringing the North and South together? Whether you know it or not, there is a large obstacle that sits between the North and South Commerce City. It's called the Rocky Mountain Arsenal Wildlife Refuge. I was on the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge from 1998, when I got on council, until the reclamation was done in 2011 as the cleaning up of the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge. Fish and wildlife then took over. It is not an obstacle between the North and the South. Matter of fact, we had a million guests that visited the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge last year just to see it. 60% of those came from outside of the United States, and they know more about the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge than we do. To unite this city, what we have to do is make this one city. This isn't two separate cities, this is one city called Commerce City. We have a northern part and a southern part, but if you'll notice other cities like Aurora, Aurora has a northern part that borders right up to Commerce City, and they have a southern part that goes as far as Arapahoe, what's our, is what we went out and do to bring, drop the barriers here and make this one city, where we don't see ourselves as two separate places, but we see ourselves as one city, and we're all Commerce Cityites. And that's the first time I've ever used the word Commerce Cityites, because that's the only thing I can call you. But it isn't a barrier, what it is, I think it's the glue that brings this city together, and it's...
I believe Commerce City should be unified again. At one time, we were. We need to rebuild partnerships with the districts within the Commerce City. We need to build partnerships with builders again. No one wants to be here. There is no North and South when I think about it. We're all one, we have a huge opportunity to be a great city again. The disrespectfulness that's going on right now that I've heard is ridiculous. I believe we can all come together and work as one, everyone has great ideas, and we need to share those ideas and work for the betterment of the city and the citizens of Commerce City. And I guarantee you that if I'm elected mayor, that's going to happen. So, thank you.
Can you even hear me? No. Okay, second question. This is for the mayors running. Conflict of interest, spouses on city council, do you believe it should be allowed? We know that the city charter is sign-on home. Conflict of interest is the question, spouses on city, city on the council, do you believe it should be allowed?
I continue where this question directly comes from. We have a city and city council member, and we have mayor candidates from the same family, husband and wife. And if you know what expertise and conflict of interest is... And if you know what ex parte and conflict of interest is are, ex parte means that if you have any subject that comes up before city council, you can't discuss it with other city council members before it's brought before the whole council for a vote. If you're living in the same household, how do you do that? You know, it may not, you may say that we can be the ones and will never do it. We, as the citizens, will never know. You also have the three-member rule. Anytime you have more than two members of city council, if you have three members or more, it is considered an open meeting. If you don't, even if you decide to drive to work together, say the mayor, his wife, and they pick up one other city council person and come in, that's an illegal meeting in that car. So as a conflict, I do not think, that's why I'm running. Because I feel that we cannot have a mayor and a sitting city council member from the same founding on council. And I feel like if you feel that that's okay, come and talk to me afterwards.
I feel the same as Renee does. I think it's a huge conflict of interest to have a councilperson and a mayor sitting on the same council. I think it's a huge conflict of interest. Nothing would come out of this except bad publicity and bad news for the council. So I don't like it and I am not for it. Thank you.
Okay, third question. This is for a general question for everybody. What is your plan to retain city staff since so many employees are leaving due to morale?
Thank you. So as someone who's worked in the city and county of Denver and worked in the city, I know the importance of employee morale. I know the importance of what it's like to be a public servant. And as I have worked in the city and county, I started working when COVID hit. And I was in charge of helping our early childhood centers stay open with food and access when it was very beginning of this. And the big piece of the public servant, you can't be overmanaged, right? You can't have oversight that hinders your ability to do work. Because at the end of the day, a bad culture eats strategy, right? For breakfast, you hear the saying? And so I think the retain, the keep, you provide opportunities for development then. You provide programs where you help the city employees understand their value to this city. You provide housing and opportunities to have it send us so they can actually enjoy restaurants and retail because of their status as an employee in the city. And you also have a strategic approach to having employee retention within the city with support for council, but not backed by council. You let the city manager do the work that hired to do and be able to support them and hold them accountable as needed. Thank you.
So the question is, is that whether, you know, as far as how to actually handle city morale, city staff morale? I will tell you previously, you had a gentleman by the name of Mr. Roger Tinklerberg. He was a city manager. Crappy city manager there was. I hate to say it. Then you also now have Mr. Jason Rogers, who's currently the city manager. And yeah, there have been a lot of staff that actually have left. They have left for one reason or another. Got it. But we also have the city manager who is wanting to make change, wanting to see growth, wanting to see us move into a better city all in all. And it's like, it's like moving a ship, right? I mean, to turn that ship a full one-eighth from what it used to be, it takes almost, it takes several miles, miles essentially, to turn that ship. So do I think it's getting better? I think it is. I think the city staff is getting better. I think the fact that we actually have, we have some, we have some good qualified folks that are currently sitting there now. Now, I'm not saying that we have some that have, that are still there who are used to doing the way things, sorry, used to doing things a certain way. That's been that way for years. But that may be, that may be true as far as what, how it was like twenty years ago? My God, we're in twenty twenty-three. This is a brand-new era. We need to go ahead and try to move forward, try to push forward for, you know, better, better streets, public safety, better retail options, everything that's out there in this huge diverse community that we have. That is all. Thank you.
Yeah, on this question, I immediately go to my day job. I work for the Colorado Department of Transportation. We regularly, we work with our Transportation Commission, which is also a body of mine that represents around the state. And I often look to how that respect is happening, you know, from, from the people sitting up on the dais to the workers that are out there, using their expertise in their field to give us good guidance and good recommendations. And honoring that, being respectful of that, I think is a great start. On city council, we only control three employees, the city manager, the city attorney, and the judge. We need to be, and I think we have as, as council member Kim just said, I think we have put a great leadership team together with Jason Rogers. He's built his, brought in his people that he thinks, and has elevated people that he thinks have similar vision. What we need to do over the next four years is develop a consistent message that people, that they can build a multi-year plan to go work towards. One of the most frustrating things working in the government, being a public servant, is that constant change in direction. You might be two years in a program, oh, new manager, we're going in a completely different direction. And that also can really drag down morale. You put a lot of time, effort, sweat into a project and then we're going a whole different path as soon as this new, this new direction is established. So I think establishing a long-term plan, but also just something that they can really feel comfortable about. Jason's here for the long run if we'll have him. He has his kids, are young and haven't paid their way through high school. He intends to be here for a long time. And that gives us a great opportunity to have a vision and ask our staff, expect them to go out there and deliver on that. And so to close it out, I really just think it's a matter of respect. Nobody on city council has that same level of expertise as maybe a traffic engineer or a city planner. We need to respect that level of expertise and then be respectful if we want to dissent, but also have good conversations. Thank you very much.
Sorry, council. That's fine. I'm a little worried. This one gets on for me. As a small business owner, losing employees is very, very difficult. Many of them, the ways it's not just money. It's the knowledge goes with it and we can't be having that. I guess I should have quite a few regime changes every four years, every two years. This city council person is, as he said, there's only three members that the city council has control over. But as an organization, the city, we have the ability to set some policies and try to help out in the sense of getting them as key stakeholders. If I have employees that stay around, they're gonna feel valued, yet they have some skin in the game and it feels other accomplished or something. And getting another way, letting them do what they're there to do is much greater. I don't know how to run the traffic box. I couldn't begin to tell you how to do that. I'm sure we have someone who does that. So allowing them to do what they're supposed to do and giving them the freedom to do so, I think is a big portion of that. And then just valuing them, showing them we actually care. It's not just showing up for paycheck and going home. There's a big, you make a difference here and it's important to us. So I think a good book, a good bit in maintaining our staff long-term, which is much greater. Thank you.
Have people been following Coach Prime? Are you familiar with Coach Prime and the story about what he's doing regarding all of his players? When he first came to the University of Colorado, Deion Sanders, he said to the players who were already on the team, "Are you going to be able to major up? And if you can major up, then you can stay." That's pretty much what happened when Jason Rogers became our city manager last fall. He gave people eight, ten months to demonstrate to him that they were the kind of people who could attain the values that he held, which in particular was pursuit of excellence. And I can tell you for myself, that's exactly what my expectation is for Commerce City, that we are an excellent community. We have excellent staff. And they are doing excellent things for this community to move us forward, exactly as the city council is trying to do. I think it's really, really important to keep that in mind that sometimes when people move on, there is a reason for them to move on. And certainly, sometimes they're going on to better things. It's a better spot for them. I would never halt someone back if that turned out to be the case for them. But I can guarantee you that Commerce City is better off today than it was two years ago. And we are moving forward. We are making progress. And that's what we have to do. Thank you.
Hello again. As a candidate for city council, my priority is to protect workers' rights and to make sure that everyone has an equal voice. I will also make sure that everyone is treated with respect and dignity. No one wants to walk in a toxic environment. Thank you.
For me, it comes down to respect. You know, you've got to respect the people that have worked hard before you and the people that are gonna come after you. You know, we, we gotta come to some agreements on what changes need to happen. What are people's goals? If you come into office and people are working hard towards good things, what's wrong with picking up where those people left off? You know, that's what makes it so hard. Is people come in with new, different ideas and different agendas. Well, we all need to focus and remember that it's the community that matters. Not each and every one of us. It's the community. It's what the people want. We need to come in and have an idea of what the people want and work towards that. As a team, we need to unite. We need to, it just reminds me of football. You know, you get a new head coach in. The new players, they don't agree with that old coach. You know, but they need to, they need to show the coach some respect, man up. And either you ask for a trade, move on, or suck it up. And let's, you know, let's, let's do it. You know, and that's, that's why I'm here. I'm here to form a solid team. I'm here to work as a team. I don't want no one to step out, you know? I don't want no one to move on. I want to be a part of this team. We got potential and we got all, we just, we just got the potential. I know we can do it and I'm just, I'm excited to be here and I'm ready to put this thing to work for the community because that's what really matters. Not each and every one of us, not how we feel, not our personal feelings. It's the people. It's all of us because we all deserve better. Thank you.
See what I'm talking about? When I got on, or when I was asked to run for this position, I talked to actually some of these employees. These were employees that were hired on back when I was on city council nineteen years ago. And then they were good employees. And for this many employees to be moving on, they're not, they're not moving on because they'd want to. They're moving on because things ain't working out good. And it's just, we got problems. Commerce City has problems on the other side. We need to figure out what's going on and how to fix it. I do have a little bit of experience back to the fire department. We used to come to get employees and get them to sign on with the department. And we'd charge them dues, we'd tell them they had to buy their own gas and they had to have their own insurance. And yes, you have to go under that looking fire. And they did it for free. And how was they gonna do that? That's all I have to say.
So we became employees. We have a lot of great employees that work for the city. However, we do have issues. You guys are aware that we don't have a grievance process for line workers? That would be very frustrating to be a line worker and not be able to grieve or complain. We have, in my estimation, too much brass. We need more people on the streets working and doing the job that they need to do instead of sitting down at a desk doing nothing. Yes, we have a city that has made some changes. I'm not quite sure that it's where I want to see the changes at. You know, I'm retired sheriff, okay? I know we have police officers out there that are working overtime, going to calls by themselves, putting themselves in danger. That's not good. We need to bring employees on. We need to sell Commerce City. And Commerce City's in bad shape right now. Our roads are bad. Our city is dirty, okay? We need to rethink where we're going. I don't know if our current city manager, I'd love to sit down with him and get his views, but I don't know if the current city manager is meeting up expectations that the citizens want. Thank you.
The one thing that everybody said that should be resonating with everybody or resonating with everybody is respect. You respect your employees and your employees respect you. You never call anyone a crappy city manager if that's the city manager that hired the city manager here. We've gone through over a million dollars in city managers hiring. Over a million dollars. Let that resonate with you. We've had three city managers within the last four years. Three of them. We've had a turnover rate in this city that is bigger than any city in the metro area. We have, and just like someone said, we are, as the city council, you're allowed for three employees, the city manager, the city attorney, and the judge. We don't have a city attorney right now. We have an interim city attorney because no city attorney wants to come to this city. Don't let it be said that as the city manager, Jason Rogers is a good city manager. The last two were good city managers because they both landed on their feet in excellent jobs. So don't let it be ever said that we have a crappy city manager. We have people that are on this council that are spouting things that they don't know, that are put in insulting position where they could be sued on their own, not the city, but themselves. So if you want to talk about the turnover rate in this city, as executive director of the Commerce City Chamber of Commerce, I can tell you all about it. Talk to me afterwards.
Okay, next question. This is a general question for everyone. How will you address the environmental problems in Commerce City?
First, I want to thank Renee for that comment. As a former city employee, when you move on, it doesn't mean you're a bad employee. It means there's other opportunities because we got kicked out. It means there's other opportunities because maybe you got kicked out. And it's important to do respect, folks, as a hard-working opportunities for change for cities they care about. Regarding environmental issues, fracking and SunCor is an issue. Right? And so as a city council member, what I will do is I'll continue to hold them to the highest accountability EPA has provided. Work with citizens and work with local jurisdictions to say, "Let's, if you're not needed, let's hold you accountable" to mitigate any future outbursts or leakage. The other piece is that I will make sure that I do everything in my power to use the fines as a benefit to our city. You know, to be able to use the negative to turn into a positive and opportunities to invest in a city that needs investment. The last is that I'll look at and use the biggest research and data studies. You have to be data-driven decisions. We can't have misinformation just out there based on truth. We have to have studies and examples to say, "This is the fact. Is the water an issue because of SunCor or is it something else? Is fracking an issue or is it something else?" But as a society, I have a drive and I want to be able to have opportunities that data-driven decisions. My experience, I've worked in philanthropic opportunity to work with a number of environmental justice organizations across the United States. There's best practices out there to work and partner with the community organizations like SunCor and others to figure out how to solve a solution that needs to be solved and needs partnership and collaboration so that we can't just let it continue to go on, but we can find some solutions in a way that we can be a model for a nation.
I guess certain city managers that can call other people names means it's okay to do, apparently. So with regards to the environmental issues, right? So we've actually recently, about a month or two months ago or so, we had requested for SunCor to come before city council to address all these issues. They have yet to respond. That's a problem all in all. Do I think they could exist in the city? Yeah, I do. However, they should be abiding by rules and regulations set forth by the EPA and CDPHE as well. You guys saw that, you know, they, the EPA fined them, I think, with $300,000 or $400,000 or something. That's chump change. These are people who are brand new, people that don't live here in the city that experiences those issues, those pollution problems that we actually have in the South. And, you know, when I go down there, it really bothers me all in all because of the fact that you've got SunCor operating right, right over, right across the pond. And then right on the other side, you've got houses that live and people who live, breathe, and essentially will die from those issues. That is a big problem all in all. How do we address it? I feel that as far as a way to address it is to continuously first, put pressure on SunCor. Ask them to come before city council. Ask residents to come before city council. Explain all the issues that they're having. And at the end of the day, a partnership means something. To partner with them? Absolutely, I think we should. Because we know that they're going to be in the city for years on end. But how do we partner with them if they aren't considered a bad actor, not wanting to come before city council to go to address the issues happening now? So what do we do? Keep pressuring. Keep putting it out there. Make sure you're, you know, you're... Make sure people are aware of the issues that are going on. That's all. It's my time.
I think improving the environmental conditions in Commerce City is such with control and what we control. And I agree with what's been said. We have to build partnerships. We have to work with SunCor. But SunCor is in line. There's several. You can go right up the way, the Cherokee Ironfield Plant. You can go to all of these other locations. We're an industrial city. We have to work on building partnerships and incentivizations to move forward. Our land use code pushes everybody backwards. There is zero incentive to upgrade your building today because you have to do the entire upgrade, which usually is a higher value than the value of your entire property. We have to start looking at those incentivized clients to help do piece by piece. You're not going to have a building that you built in 1980. It's not going to be compliant with today's building codes. You want to add a brick to that building? Guess what? The whole entire building, the entire property, and it has to come in compliance with 2023 building code. That's a $20-plus billion investment. And guess what? They're going to move the greenfield by the airport, but then our $100 million budget at Commerce City turns to less than $15 overnight if that happens. You can roll your eyes when I'm telling you 86% of our taxes come from the South Side businesses. And that's what we have to do. 86% was the last estimation, comes from the South Side businesses in Commerce City. And so we have all the reason to continue to work with them on getting better. We want to be a great community with clean air, clean water. But it doesn't, it starts with partnerships. We can't, we can bully public. And I've been there. I voted every single time to hold SunCor accountable because I do believe they need to be much better neighbors. I don't know a single person that doesn't believe that. But we can't just point at SunCor because they're not the only business out there doing that. They are probably the worst. But we have a line of businesses that need to get in line and get better. So I think those partnerships are the most important thing to do for them.
So I hear the several statements I've made so far. But it's a very real problem for a lot of people. And I went down there. I've been around, checked everything out. And it's scary that you don't, there's things you can't see. It's in the air, it's in the water. And then we've seen times when we get business and it's why. If you charge a fine, it doesn't fix anything. If you charge more than one, it's just a cost of business to them. I don't think they're going away. So I think we have to work with them. But we work with them in a way that they can't just pay off and continue to do as they please. They actually have to do what we're told to do. And then there's ways of doing that. Doing it piece by piece, I don't feel this is what's going to help us. I mean, people today are hurting. And they're continuing to breathe this air and pollute our water. And without going through and getting rapid response to these issues, we're going to have just the ongoing dull, lack of apathy here to get things done. So we put real things in front of them to have them actually be accountable. They make a difference to them and not just fine them.
This is right in my wheelhouse because this is probably what I'm most known for is my positions on environmental issues. Before I came on city council, I had formed an organization called North Range Concerned Citizens. And the idea behind that was to educate and inform residents about the threat of residential fracking in North Commerce City. There were 10 sites at that time that were proposed. I was elected to city council. And in the first year and a half, we wound up putting in some of the strictest oil and gas regulations in the metro region. On top of it, all 10 of those sites have since withdrawn from North Commerce City or their permits have expired. But we're not out of the woods. To the north, Adams County has two sites just on the other side of E-470. 23 of those wells are fracking into Outlook, which is just above 120th, between 120th and E-470. And another 16 are going to be fracking down across, under E-470, all the way down to 112th, between Chambers and Sable. That is PDC Energy that is doing that formerly Great Western. It is, of course, owned by Chevron now. On the other hand, it goes by PDC Energy still. We also have the issue with SunCor before. That is critical as well. As someone says, as many say, it's not going anywhere. On the other hand, could they not use their $32 billion to not leak, to not contaminate? Maybe they could upgrade their equipment. Maybe they could employ new technology. There's all kinds of things that a company with revenues of $32 billion could do to help our residents. And finally, last night, I was on an arsenal meeting. There are issues there that we need to keep track of as well. That was, of course, a chemical plant before.
Hello again. I've been taking a lot of notes. This is a very complex issue. The reality is so... All right. Sorry, Barry.
Thank you.
Yeah. This is a very complex issue. The reality in Commerce City is a mixed residential and industrial city. SunCor is a large, SunCor is the largest and one of the oldest industry in Commerce City. There is a many concern with oil and gas pipeline close to residential area. But many of my neighbors work for SunCor. I can't turn back on my neighbors. SunCor has also contributed a lot of tax revenue to Commerce City. If we're talking about removing this industry from the city, we also need to be honest about what can we replace? What will our neighbors who work for oil and gas do if they lose their job? This is my question. I'm going to leave it up to you. Thank you.
It's a very touchy subject. You know, I know there's a lot of residents that have been living around SunCor for a long time now. You know, I'm no professional. I don't know all the ins and outs. But I do know every business should be held accountable for their actions. But to me, SunCor is no different than people that choose to smoke, choose to drink, have oil spills in their driveways, and just throw trash wherever is acceptable to them. I understand it's a big difference. But unless you drive a fully electric vehicle, you run full solar panels on your house, you don't purchase any kind of fuel, then, you know, really have room to talk. Because it's a very touchy subject. Yes, they can be better. And hopefully, we can get in touch with them and work together as a team to give everybody what they need and to be safe around our community. And so our kids, our grown-up breathing this air, you know, I'm just tired of everybody coming through Commerce City and batting off on us. You know, we need to give the program. People that come through, you know, they need to see a cleaner, greener city. And that's what I expect. And that's why I'm here. I'm happy to be a part of that team to hopefully communicate with SunCor, with all the fracking industry, and just everybody that's involved. Like I said, I'm a truck driver. Our bosses have replaced a whole fleet of trucks to run cleaner, run better. You can run your hand through our exhaust system. And the only thing that comes out of there on your hand is rust. No black smoke, no soot, no nothing like that. It's expensive. Anybody knows the semi-truck can cost you $200,000, $250,000. That's just on the tractor alone. It's hard to keep up with the times. Times are changing. I understand that. But it's very expensive. I don't have the money to go full electric. If they were to tell me tomorrow, "You can't go put diesel in your truck", I'm in trouble. So unless you got the money to keep up with it, we can't be judgy as companies because it's expensive to make the changes. We've got to be patient. We've got to work as a team and as a community. Thank you.
I think Rich kind of hit me on the head there when he was talking about that exhaust pipe. You know, I can remember back in the old days, you could stick your finger inside of it. The exhaust pipe, you can't horse that crap off. I mean, it's there. Today, it just, there have been many things that just, they weren't clean. And no, we're never going to be able to get to where you had zero pollution. It's sometimes you have to add a little bit. I've been around long enough, I've seen gas and fliers. And I got to tell you, SunCor has come a long ways. And, you know, we used to, like I said, go down there on a regular basis on training fires. And we'd put the air when we did that. And, you know, burn up 1,500 gallons of diesel. It was a necessity. And we needed to do, to teach our guys, this is how you put these fires out. I mean, sometimes you've got to make a mess to... Sometimes you've got to break a leg and make it on, type of thing, I guess. But they, SunCor basically shut us down on training because we didn't look at the air. Said, "You guys can't do that anymore. You got to figure out another way." And they started just getting better, 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 all the time. If you think you're going to close them down and had to start buying our oil from overseas, from these different countries, those guys are all living back 60 years past. Can you imagine? I think... I know it's not in this area, but they're still putting air. That's not the way to go. We need to work with SunCor. We need to work with all of our businesses.
Well, this is a touchy subject. You know, I've lived here most of my life and we had to deal with the arsenal, which there are still current issues with the arsenal. Just like we have issues with SunCor. Can the city be a better partner? We probably can. But we need to hold SunCor and all the other chemical companies that's in South Commerce City accountable and responsible for what they do. It's slap in the face to every person in this room when SunCor purchased and wants to distribute 700 electric lawn mowers. It's a slap in the face. Okay? I'm not going to stand for it. Okay? I think we can be better. If I'm mayor, I'm going to have an open-door policy. I want to invite SunCor. I know Mr. Kim said they invited him several times. But we need to keep pressing forward. We, they are vital to Commerce City. They support a lot of activities for our kids. They support our economy. They're not going away anytime soon. They are a vital, integral part of PIA. I don't know if you guys know that. We, they have underground fuel lines going to PIA. They are not going away. So we need to find ways to be a better partner. Okay? That's the bottom line. Thank you.
Communications, cooperation, and collaborations. That's how it works with SunCor. SunCor is not going to come to a meeting of city council to be a piñata. They are going to come there to have everybody just beat them up and make them the enemy of it. Everyone... We had one of the council people come up and say that we have companies that are fracking outside of our borders when it comes into Commerce City. There is nothing we can do about that. What, SunCor is regulated by EPA and CDEPHE. Those are the ones that regulate them. Those are the people that we need to talk to. We need to go down to the state and say, "If SunCor is doing this, if SunCor is doing this, these are the regulations we'd like to see them done in Commerce City." Right across the road from SunCor is the Cherokee Plant. How many of these see coal trains run through this city every day that are over two miles long? Okay, those coal trains are going to the Cherokee Plant, and that plant is fueled by coal. Do you think they're not polluting? But not one of the city council people that came up here said anything about any other company except SunCor. They didn't say one thing about what SunCor does for this city. The youth grants, the scholarships, the SunCor Boys and Girls Club, just like the... Just like Mr. Johnny said, the underground lines to DIA run to Sun, from SunCorps, and to Buckley. They are a national energy defense company. They are not going away. What we need to do is have communications, cooperations, and collaborations, and make them a better company. Thank you.
Eric, you got it right.
His question, or his not his question, statement and question. My property tax on my commercial suite went from $14,000 to $35,000 in a year.
That building right over there, there's costing us $280,000 a year to grow.
What can be done to lower it unless you can afford to use this here?
It's gonna put me out of business. How are we gonna grow? We can't grow.
His question is, how, what can be done to lower property taxes on commercial properties?
Yeah, we can't grow. Why would we want a business here?
Started this way last time.
I know. I'm gonna give you the short answer to this. I don't know. I have no idea what we need to do. Property taxes are spread out through so many entities. The fire district, the school districts, and everything, special districts, that I don't know. I don't know why your property tax jumped as much as it did.
50%.
My long answer is, this is something that needs to be looked into at the state level. Property taxes are one of the things that, when you hear gentrification, gentrification starts with property taxes. If you live in a neighborhood and you've lived there for 30 years and you've paid your property taxes all this time, and then that neighborhood turns over and starts building, when the water rises, all boats rise, and all property taxes rise. That's how people get property taxed out of their homes. If you're of a limited income or income that is solid, that you have so much on social security, and then you're paying $800 property tax. The neighborhood changes and all of a sudden it goes to $2,000. All of a sudden, you can't afford to live there anymore. You've been gentified out of your home. What we don't want to do is gentify businesses out of Commerce City. Well, I can tell you right now, if anybody has a magic answer, I will be the first to write it down. And if I'm elected mayor, I will be the first to implement it. Thank you.
I agree, Mr. Bullock. I don't have the answer. I do know that people are feeling stressed with, in taxes. People, there's two income houses. People can't afford rent, they can't afford mortgage, they can't afford running business. But all I'd like to do as mayor is form a commission of business owners and citizens of Commerce City to address this specific problem and to come to council and give recommendations of what we can do. Mr. Bullock was right, we have a lot of districts, a lot of metro districts up here, especially in the north, and we're, we're, you guys are banned. And what are you getting out of it? Nothing, except more taxes and longer hours to work. Am I correct?
Right.
So I don't have the answer either, but I do want to form a commission of business owners and...
Just gotta get some kind of caps on.
Yeah, and all ours from the north and south, because we're one city. And see if we can come up with some sort of solution, a proposal we can take to the state. Thank you.
When I look at my tax bill, it says that Adams County, those are the people that the successor raises, raises or lowers their taxes. The city's taxes are basically not changing much, other than where they raised them. I mean, all the special districts, the school district, the fire district, the water district, they're all set up on the limits. And the county controls it, and the state controls the county. So it's, it's all to the city councils. It's as far as I'm...
You're trying to do your business here.
Oh, I agree 100%. We're way out of that.
Yeah, trying to drag it out.
You know, your question is the exact reason why I'm here. You know, I chose to get involved because I'm tired of being stressed out year after year. You know, I get that tax bill, my wife's like, "Our taxes are going up again." I'm like, "Again?" Like I said, you know, our days are getting longer, we're getting more tired, we're getting older. I'm aging, you know, I feel like, um, every year is like 10 years, you know? That's why I'm here, is to get some answers and figure out what we can do to make it better. Because like you said, we're not gonna grow as a community. Our taxes are so high, we're just gonna get out, it's already out. We can't bring new business in. We're dying, you know? If we can't help our people here that have businesses, we can't keep the business in Commerce City, can't keep those businesses safe, we're in trouble. So I'm here to get some answers too now. And I feel for you, being a business owner myself. I mean, used to be, until the industry shut me down, but it's, it's tough.
Not stressed.
It's very tough, so just hang in there and hopefully we can work together and get some answers and figure this thing out before, you know, we get shut down, so thank you.
Hello again. When I go to the, to the, talking to neighbors, their main concern is why they have to drive all the way to Denver or to Aurora for their, for their need, but no taxes. But I think your answer is, I think every problem has a solution. If I get elected, I think we go to look up to this thing and see how we can make it work. Thank you so much.
If you live in Ward 4, you know what's happening with your property taxes because of the metro district. So the metro district is 88 mills on your property taxes, while the city is only three mills. So it's not really the city that's causing the issue, it's the metro districts that are causing the issue. And I want to remind you that there are people who are ready for city council right now, who are on councils, when they approve those kinds of service plans that allowed 88 mills, allowed 56 mills, allowed 75 mills. We need to stop that. We need to stop the abuse that the special district, metro district laws have allowed. That's something that I've been working very hard on, on city council. It's extremely important to put an end to that. There are ways to get around it, possibly. If there is a material failure in the agreement, if there's a material defect. But otherwise, those are ironclad, those are quasi judicial entities that are created and essentially are taxation without representation. We don't get to vote them out. It is what it is. It is very upsetting. And I do worry about people on fixed incomes, people who are living right on the edge. We did move a million dollars of American Rescue Act money, ARPA money, into rental and mortgage assistance. So if that could be, if some assistance to people were trying to do that, because we know that next spring, there may be problems coming for people. I don't want to see anybody losing their home, whether they live in a rental or they own their home. Because what we need to do is prevent homelessness, not create it. So whatever we can do, I am for. I did also, it feels like this is going on, I'm loud, yeah, there you go. Two minutes. Thank you very much.
SunCorps, will I answer your question? Do you know what's going on?
I don't know. Maybe you're right. It's coming up to $35,000. They don't put it on the card, of course. Fight it out later when you get to the...
Yeah.
It's pushing. You should do it as well as that right before we get on the card.
Right. So there is a... To get further, we could talk about it for a second, we'll get it, we can try to answer more specifically to your answer, but your overall answer to your question, I have, it's, it's one of the reasons I'm here today. I started off, working with the border director, the northern district, which we're sitting in right now, for the very reason that our taxes were just astronomical and high, and I couldn't figure out why. The state standard, the state average, current proposition H H, which is currently going through, is 63 mills. I paid 212 mills on our property. So that's a big portion right there. And Susan's right, the 88 change mills goes to the metro district, which technically, we collected as northern district one, but required to give it over to the development control district. And there's nothing we can do to say that. I don't even mean to say that. I did not lie about it. I let them very clearly know how I feel about it, and what they're doing wrong, and I need answers, and they continue to refuse to give us answers, and they continue suing us for that very reason. I am fighting vigorously to fix this problem. It will continue in the future. We can change things in the sense that, right now, metro districts are locked in, that only things can be changed, both sides agree. Developers are never gonna agree to it as a stance without a better reason and requirement to do so. Which is, I have some ideas that I want to do that. As we do districts going forward, having a sunset clause on these things, so that we don't have, people that don't want to come here and start businesses because they can't afford to do it. I fully understand this, and possibly so with such high taxes. So putting situations where it's not just forever, we have to pay these taxes that are just unbelievably high, as well as going through and finding ways to have actual real representation for those who have to pay tax. Because there's not much you can do with the way it's set up permanent. So I'm fighting very hard to fix that, and that's what I'll do if you guys... Thank you.
I'd say similarly, that's why I got to the city council as well, because I was incredibly frustrated by this kind of blind raising of taxes. I first went to my metro district as well, started there, and worked on, had worked up to the city council. I think the most frustrating part is the dead ends we've hit every single time we tried to make positive change for maybe a metro district that was approved in 2002. And those are basically financial agreements. And we're, you know, 20 years later, we're trying to understand why the person that moved in in 2003 is still paying, you know, 20 years later with no end in sight. That's the problem. That should never happen again. And we have to get future regulation in order before we move forward and not allow for anything like that to take advantage of it. But the state is another place that we have to continue to push. Title 32 in the metropolitan district is completely controlled by the state. We have the ability to approve or deny a plan, but the enforcement really has been removed from our ability to make any change after that agreement is made. What we can control are things like the NIGID, the Northern Infrastructure General Improvement District up here. Our council has lowered that. When we've had that opportunity to lower the mill levies, as our community grows, it should continue to lower. There's more paying into that. We have to continue to control that. Fees are also key. And when we're talking about growth and being able to come here, every time we add fees, that adds the overall cost, artificially increases the value of everything that's around here. And we all feel that as well. We're all in 80022, no matter where you live in the city. So from a real estate perspective, you're doing comps inside your zip code, and when the value goes up across the street, it goes up for everybody. And so these artificially inflated values are the source of the problem, but we have to work with the state and county government so we can work collectively under the 10 lines under your, under your property taxes to reduce them one by one, because the city only chose two or three levels.
So I'm on, I'm on the Northreek Metro District Ward as well. To your specific question, right? Obviously, like I think the others have said, we do have mill levies that are in place that are being, that are being basically used for paying off lawyers or whatever the case is, without any type of representation from citizens. We have that problem all in all. Hell, you even have candidates up here who actually approved those metro districts that are on here, who are wanting to, who are trying to become mayor, for example. And what happens is, we got a point now, we got a problem right now. We've got a developer that's here that is totally bamboozling all of our residents up here in the north that is causing the issues that we have now. 88 bills, that's ridiculous. My house alone, I think, could pay about nine grand. About three of that grand goes directly over to the city, to NIGID, to the schools, and all that stuff. The other six goes directly over to, over to the developer. You realize there's, there's also material modifications that could occur, right? Material modification, you put that in place, you know, you say, "Hey, you tack off 30, 30, 40,000 towards the infrastructure of the home to build out, and that's it. There's no reason for us to have a mill levy. There's no reasons whatsoever." The other part of this too, I would say, is that, looking at it from a state's perspective, what can we actually do with, with, with it, right? As a business owner, people are paying use taxes. So when you buy something from out of the city and you bring it into the city, there's a certain chunk of it that is now having to be paid back to the city, to Commerce City. I would love nothing more than just to maybe even cut a half a percent off of that so that businesses can, small businesses, because that's what really matters to me, can thrive in this city compared to some of these large conglomerates that we have out here. My time is up.
I guess I do want to go first, because that's a long way to go. First, I appreciate the question, and I appreciate the underlying need for urgency. Because what I've heard from you is like, it's not just the property tax, this is your livelihood that's at risk. And as a council member, I think it should be a sense of urgency to solve your problem. Going to college, and one of my political science professors said it best, it's easy to identify the problem, but it's hard, very few people find solutions. That's what I want to do. I think what, what, as a small business owner, is the livelihood of our community. And we want to keep small business owners here, and we want to keep the trajectory of our community upward. And so what I would do as a, as a council member is improve the taxing status. Begin to think through, how are we compared to other neighboring cities? We want to be the best. We want to make sure that we're not solely relying on property values to build infrastructure, to build necessities, but we begin to think about other ways to bring in more small business owners like yourself. The other piece I'll look at, traditionally, as cities that are traditionally offered the larger retos, and see how it applies to your work. And say, "If these are cities, let's provide some to small business owners as well." Because the expansion of small businesses is, again, the livelihood of our community. It is our community. The last is, I will focus and really push to have, keep Commerce City money in Commerce City. I am tired of driving to Bright every Thursday to go cricket for my, my 14-year-old daughter for her, her level of gaggle, right? I'm tired of going to Chili's in Bright. All my cell taxes go there, they shouldn't be here, right? Because they had a curry sitting. So I'll push to have a keep local businesses like Austin, keep Austin here, right? The last piece I would do is I'll use my national resources. We're not alone in this issue, right? We think about a sense of urgency, we think about solving a problem, Renee said, we, we don't have the answer yet, but we can have an urgency and bring in other resources like the National League of Cities, that, oh, by the way, it's often other city officials and agencies that address the same problem we're addressing. Thank you.
Okay, next question. This is a general question for everyone. What is the reason for no more gas stations? Can Commerce City support all electric infrastructure without raising taxes?
The question, what is the reason for no more gas stations? Can Commerce City support all electric infrastructure without raising taxes? The answer to the second part of the question is no. You cannot support an all-electric infrastructure without raising taxes. Matter of fact, if we put in our all-electric infrastructure, we would have to wait for the grid to show up. Because right now, the grid... the grid to show up because right now, the grid will not support it. So now, I do not know why there are no more gas stations. I have heard from different developers and different people that have come to the chamber and said that after they did everything that they were required to do, they jumped through every hoop, they went and got an increment, they did everything that the city required them to do, they came before city council, and city council then put more requirements on it, basically requiring them to spend more and more money till it became non-profitable for a gas station. Little do you know that when you're pumping that gas, that would have ding ding ding, that sales tax that goes right to the city. That's one of the most profitable enterprises you can have is a gas station. And if you look to the north and you look to the south, in some of these gigantic gas stations that they've built with shopping inside and everything, they've done nothing but made gold mine for the city. And if you don't believe me, go up to Johnstown anytime and see the big gas station up there and just talk to their city council and ask them whether revenue windfall is expected to come. That's my answer to that question, but I don't know.
I agree with Renee. The city cannot support an all-electric. The grid will definitely, will not support it. However, we need the revenue. We're trying to attract businesses and not having any more gas stations is just asinine. I do know the King Supers down in the border city was just, there were plenty of gas stations there next to Pizza Hut. No longer. Okay? We are trying to attract businesses, not push them away. And this is only with gas stations. This is across the board that what I've heard with builders, developers, that they jump through all these suits and they come in front of council, then all of a sudden they got more hoops to jump through. Or they made an ax and said, no, it's not going to be done anymore. Okay? I don't even know if our comprehensive plan is even up to date anymore. It's supposed to be a living document, but I think we need to re-look at things, sit down and reassess what we're doing as a city because not having more gas stations just drives down our revenue. Thank you.
It's all about supply and demand. It's the bottom line. We don't want to be messing with supply and demand. We need the S.A. system. If they couldn't make money, if they couldn't do a service for our community, we wouldn't be coming and trying to go. Electric's a long ways away. I got my doubts on whether it's going to work here in the Rocky Mountains. And the cold weather, it's something to be seen. We need to wait till it gets here and everything's up and running before you go closing down the gas stations.
I think it's crazy. You know, I sit here and just think to myself, you know, like every week, every couple of weeks, I gotta put fuel in my truck. Here in Commerce City, especially along Hundred and Fourth here, I don't know if y'all noticed, but the gas prices are like twenty to thirty cents more than everywhere else. I'm driving a Thor and I'm driving, sometimes I go up to Longmont because their fuel is way cheaper. But you're going outside your city for things as easy as fuel, that's pretty crazy. You know, fuel's a necessity. There's not very many people that run full electric cars up here. You know, even to run that stuff in your home, those electric chargers and all that stuff, that's pricey. That's pricey stuff. And it's, it's just, it's very tough. But if we're shutting down gas stations, you know, in our own community here, you know, the whole supply and demand thing, if we don't have more to choose from, the few that are here are going to just scavenge out the prices. And I can't afford it, you know? It's tough. A hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars in fuel every two weeks, that's a lot. That's three hundred dollars a month that could be going towards something else, you know, towards my dollar's dollars, towards improving my house, you know, improving something, improving my way of life, you know? I'm driving at the city limits to go and put fuel. So again, I'm rich to do, I'm running for war three, I'm the rioting. It's crazy, you know? If, I'm here to get answers, just like y'all, like I said. So if you agree with where I'm coming from, just write my name and I'm just here looking for an opportunity to better all of us. And fuel is one of them that is a huge problem, especially up here. Thank you.
Hello, Dean. I used to own Tesla before, but I think some of my friends are not interested about an electrical vehicle. So I think everybody's free to drive wherever they want to drive. And I think we need someone, a station here, because we need that for the tax revenue. And I really believe we can, I go agree with Renee and Rich, and why gas is so expensive here. Well, we don't have a competition, that's why. But if we have someone, a station here, I think we're going to be doing good. Thank you so much.
Hi, I want to clarify and correct a few things here. First, charging stations, we just moved a million dollars from our ARPA funds again to start a grants team. We're going to leverage that million dollars to get federal funds in order to electrify Commerce City, in order to bring in clean energy. I think that will be a great head start and help with issues with air quality and water contamination and so forth. That'll be a giant help. As for, someone said that we would raise taxes in order to do electric charging stations? We can't raise taxes. Tabor. Tabor does not allow a city to raise taxes. That's been state law for twenty, thirty years. And as for gas stations, we just approved two very large gas stations. One of them is on Highway eighty-five at a hundred and twelve, and the other one is downtown road at about eighty-second, where Nexus is. Those are giant, popular travel gas stations, so they will be coming into Commerce City. So the thought that the city council is turning down gas stations is just pulling it incorrect. That is just not correct. And on top of it, I think one of the issues that happens in the north especially is that we are getting that airport travel. The people who are driving in as visitors from the west are using these gas stations as their last gas station before they turn in their rental cars. And so they're taking advantage of it. I understand the problem. I wish we had control over things like King Supers in order to bring, in order to bring the price down. Oftentimes, you see multiple gas stations on corridors that actually know our corridors are taking. We have as many gas stations as we can have because of land decisions. So, thank you very much. I hope that I helped clear some things up.
Yeah, you mentioned the right word, tabor. That's the whole problem. That's the whole problem down there on the Capitol is because of tabor. They don't want free with money and give it back to the consumer, the you and everybody else. They don't have this, the wild spending money. It's tabor. And you notice they want to try and get rid of tabor. That's the best thing that happened to Colorado, the taxpayers and their station.
So, just to clarify here, just to get my interest to this, I did go to S.A. Supercomputer Engineering and I was part of the team that did the recent, the solar efficiency from nine percent to twelve percent. So we did a three percent increase and that was part of the increase which you had on. Solar is a very big thing for me. Because of that, I was a power customer. No matter how you look at it, energy is energy. And we have it from gas, we have it from solar, we have it from wind. It's all energy at that point. In regards to being able to support electric vehicles, we can't with the current way we have it set up. We try to look to our price table, but the most northern Commerce City here is unable to even buy power at a reasonable rate. So if we put more people on electric cars, it's just going to increase those rates. If we have a lot of oil and gas, it's going to increase those rates. So either way, we're stuck. There are some things to be done to help out a little bit. Speaking solely with United Power here, but they have some blocks and difficulties with getting solar onto your residential property to sell back to them. Texas has a great process where they allow you to sell back at the same rate that they purchase it from. Right now, we're stuck with selling back. We have what's called wholesale, which are four cents per ton of hour, buying at around nine cents at various, various things. It's roughly two percent less. So that's one of the things that's really keeping us, being able to keep energy prices low, having people put it on the grid and having the ability to support that. So solar right now is a very, all these electric vehicles is a very difficulty at the moment. As for gas stations, I would not have a problem with having more gas stations. I don't know. We have a slowdown of that. As Susan said, it's too apparent to group. I was unaware that there was an issue with this. I can only improve those too. Going forward, I think gas stations are a fantastic situation for us. I buy gas out of the city. I go down and I buy it at Costco and it's cheaper. I imagine all this, but there's no reason to spend thirty cents more a gallon when you can go someplace else for cheaper. So we're losing on there. Denver's taking revenue from me, it's taking revenue from you, it's taking revenue from us. It's as pretty as possible. So if you give away more and more of our money to other cities, it's just going to push us further and further back. So I have no issue with more gas stations.
I agree with Councilwoman Noble, but we haven't. We haven't said no. No more gas stations, all of it. There's been some challenges during development on a couple. I won't ignore that. But gas goes to the highway user transportation fund. That's where your taxes go. That goes to the state and then getting back to us by our work loans. We've got about seventy thousand dollars left here. That's not going to change next year. That's not going to change if we add more gas stations. We'll get revenue off of the chips and the sodas, the apples, things from selling at a gas station. But highway user transportation fund goes by your rent lines that you have in your city. You report that to the Colorado Department of Transportation on an annual basis and you bring it in. What I would like to point out though is what's happening down south on Tower Road is working its way north. And it's frustrating. Jenny and I have been here eight years and, you know, we have seen some growth on Hundred and Fourth, but we have it through the growth that we've all wanted. What you did see down at Green Valley Ranch, gas stations came first, then all the other stuff we see, the little restaurants, whether the drive-throughs, whatever, and then they build out from there. I think that's, that's where we're at unfortunately, is we need the gas stations for a start and then, you know, everything kind of falls in the gap. That's a frustrating thing for all of us that have been here for a decade, fifteen years. Why hasn't that come yet? And I think there's a lot of different reasons, but I can tell you, the economic development plan has been completely revitalized up the city. I do think we're on a positive path. There's plenty, plenty to work on still. But as Councilwoman Noble said, we've got two major national gas stations for the entire city. I do think, you know, we can work on this transition work. It incentivizes the gas stations to lay the conduit for electrification for future. But I'll tell you right now, our largest employer in Commerce City is UPS. They go electric tonight. They're just UPS is four times the power demand as our entire city. The seventy-six trucking companies are electric overnight. Three nuclear power plants, power plants in Commerce City will be able to charge them right around.
I think Councilwoman Noble and actually Councilmember Purse actually hit the nail on the head as far as where our taxes go. And as far as with the two, two facilities or two gas stations that are coming to the city, that is still in the works at this point. You know, we're not going to see electric happen overnight. It's probably not going to happen probably in the next fifty years, right? I think it's, you know, even when I was looking at my house for electric to go solar, they want like forty thousand upfront. It's like, I don't have that kind of money, you know? So here we are. You know, and just, so you know, I mean, from my standpoint, I think both can coexist. At the end of the day, we do have, you know, we do have some electrical car charging stations that are out there at different, at different areas. We also have gas, gas in here as well. I gotta say, I agree with Tabor. Tabor's it and, I mean, if you get rid of Tabor, then they can start to probably potentially skyrocket. That's all that matters.
Thanks for the question. So as a Colorado native and so I've lived your whole life, taxpayer bill arrives is here for a reason. When you think about the state itself, those rural communities and because of the population here, we have to go to the ballot to make sure you don't increase taxes in some of the most vulnerable small communities because your population's higher. Very similar like up north versus south in core Commerce City. Could you imagine a world if we only passed bill initiatives just up here and it impacted the whole city? That's why I'm running for city council at large, because this is a, this is an opportunity for us to really think through how do we work together as a community so we don't create policies and hurt other parts of our community because we just think it's a good idea. What you hear consistently across today is that we need a vision. When I think about, when I think about electric energy and I think about gas, I think that they both can close this. We try. Right? I had an electric vehicle and I tried to drive around with a battery system. Research how to buy an electric vehicle, they're eighty thousand dollars, right? And then by the way, I said, hey, who can service my electric vehicle in Core Commerce City? There's no Nissan, Lyft, right? There's no, so what I would do as a council member, what I would do is I'll make sure we push for a vision and say, how do we really develop our economic base on core, on tower? How do we make sure we have our retail on tower? How do we make sure we reconnect to our airport? Because the city of Denver makes a billion dollars just on the airport alone. One billion. That's before sales tax and tourism. Two billion, just, and you drive up our corridor. I used to have a condo on Tower Road and I've seen it grow and develop. The other thing I would do is I'll make sure that we push to approve our comprehensive plan twenty forty-five. The reason we push to approve it because, well, unlike cities like Littleton, for example, they had their comp plan approved and they had a vision and changed their ordinances and updated their city policies to reflect the citizens' need. This plan right now has been, thirty-six thousand residents have input on this plan. So it's well represented across the city. So that's why we have a plan, have a vision, and like you, we ask and propose this.
Okay, this is a question for At-Large. What can council do to attract more business, retail and manufacturing?
So as part of what we can discuss this evening, a lot of the things you talked about is how to get bigger businesses here. And it's definitely one of the things that'll help us across the board, having more tax revenue, having more jobs. If you can stay here, have your one input here, all those things are important. I originally mentioned on my, at a previous webinar, that's one of those things that I've looked a lot, I've talked to their provider there. They brought a few new businesses there. I don't know if they're exactly number, but they did attract people there. It's one very easy way to do something. There's a lot of other options. We have some red tape and how to do things. I took a brief one of the solar issues there. We have, the city has one of the harder regulations is to get things up on the building. I'm not saying that would apply to this, but situations where we have, these red tape takes are still pulled down, as well as incentives. We can do things through tax incentives. We have a lot of things like that. And just bring people, make them decide they want to come here and attracting people, making, you know, once they decide to come here, get them to actually go through it. I've seen several in the last couple of months. So two of us, we're going to come in that last minute need to bail out. We can go through that. We can't just get so close and lose it left and right every time. We have to show them why they should come here, give them the reasons to do it, and then follow through with it and get them to go out to the end. Thank you.
Yeah, I think this is one of our most important opportunities as a city. We have an incredibly large developed areas still as you look out near the airport. And attractive businesses will be important. And attractive businesses will be important for all of us, from our tax structure, from how that tax burden that comes back to our small businesses. If that can be shared, that's, that's going to go a long way for the health of this community. I think partnerships, we have had, that turnover we talked about earlier, really impacts our regional partnerships. When you, when you are looking at opportunities for development, a lot of times, the company can care less what town they're in, they need to be in a specific area for specific reasons for access. And we need to work with the state, oh, I hit office, as well as, all of our neighbors Aurora, the county, right? We, we are seeing businesses interested here. The restaurants that we just talked about, we gave incentives, we removed all the development fees. That's not the only thing that's casing, we gave them a million dollar, very low interest construction loan, and they still didn't come, that's still, that's still didn't happen for us. So I can tell you, on the four years that I've been on city council, these last 12 to 18 months has been the most progress and kind of the best path forward that we've seen. I think we're on the first step of that. And I think there's been changes in our economic development group, that I think, good, bad, or different, a new, a new voice, a new set of eyes, a new drive up to get out there, and we're already starting to see that pay dividends. But what we need to do, we need to make sure, as Babs was talking about, when they come here and present to us, it's not always just money, it's time, it's how are we going to focus? And we've developed opportunities where we can kind of prioritize from an approval standpoint, businesses so we can go through the development process. I could talk about this all, all weekend if you want, but the two minutes of maybe that.
So somewhat what Councilmember Horst had mentioned, you know, we do provide, we do provide low interest rate loans. We have attempted so many times to, to reach out to retail, retail to come into the city. The one notion I will, I will always refute is the fact that we need more rooftops. Because obviously, when you have Brighton who has about 45,000 residents, and here we are, I think we're sitting closer around there, up here, and they have Prairie Center, to me, I think it's mind boggling. You know, going back to the question earlier about, you know, property taxes too, definitely we'll look into potentially reducing, at least like I said, maybe by a half a percent on, on the use tax. So as long as our city can still maintain and operate as it needs to be, let me throw that out there. You know, it's, 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 it has been a true, it has been a true, it's been a lot of progress in the past year since I've been on council. So we are still constantly pushing forward. We have an aggressive economic development team who is reaching out, chatting, chatting with folks to try to even get them here to actually want to build out. So, thank you.
What was the question again? You want a question? So, probably the biggest.
What can you do, what can council do to attract more business, retail, and manufacturing?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I mentioned a little bit earlier, it's about having a vision. It's about setting the motion where we want to go, and placing our big bets as a city, and say, this is where we want to move forward. The challenge, and I, and I hear stories and I hear challenges about not wanting to be in Commerce City. And what we listed earlier is that, you know, something has in common, Brighton, Littleton, Grand Junction, they're all smaller populations than we are, right? So then what is the, and they don't have the same proximity to the airport, the economic engine that we have. So we got to figure out together, through partnerships, through relationships, how do we begin to solve this problem? I hear stories, I think about a developer I talked to the other day, where he's knocking on the door for opportunities to be here, but the doors are closed literally at noon, right? To, to make sure he can approve. I hear horror stories of like, it's taken almost three to four years to get approval. And then when they say, well, if I only have four approvals, right? After five years, I only get four major projects in the city after 25 years? We don't want that as a reputation across our city. So we got to have partnerships, we got to have, for people to gather, we got to talk about systems and build them better, and we got to look at our tax incentives. We also got to look at opportunities to, to, to market our opportunities for Commerce City. Right? It shouldn't be hard to market, it should be easy to market. We're right here, we're close, and we have a historic district that people want to move to. As a Colorado native, I buy a boat out of Nevada, no one went to Nevada growing up, but they have an old town. Erie has a downtown, right? Edgewater, the dog the bounty hunter growing up, that has a downtown, that's what it was known for, Dog the Bounty Hunter. You know, some of the young folks in here are, who's dog, but that's what it was known for. Right? But now they have a downtown that's driving this, because they had a vision. We Rich had a 10-year plan, Littleton had a vision, we can create a vision and attract businesses. As a business owner, you want consistency, you want to make sure the rules are not going to change as you're in there, because this is the risk if you keep changing as you build out. Thanks.
So much over the years. No, I want to bring that back. Snap that skin, roll that up, that's a good one. We need to bring, bring that a lot, snap that, down, down, man. Pull the low things, yeah, I would miss. High low, yeah, that would be down, down, that would be Derby. Yeah, low down, down, low down, bring it back.
He wanted to answer the question as well. It wasn't At-Large, check box, twice it.
As a mayor candidate, I wanted to have a shot at that same question also. As the executive director of the Commerce City Chamber of Commerce, a lot of businesses come to the chamber first, ask what their possibilities are, and I pass them along to the city manager and economic development, they do the work, but we get the first shot at them. A lot of the companies that they just talked about, we give them tours around the city before they ever talk to the city manager or economic development. All of those companies do one thing that's in common, they want city council meetings. They'll watch five or six city council meetings before they decide to make a decision if this is a city they want to come to. I've had too many of them come back to me and say, what is going on? And I cannot answer that question because I'm not on city council. I want to be here mayor and be on city council and work within. But I've had people say to me, we watched one city council meeting where they cut off a public area halfway and left. The next city council meeting, they stayed there until 12 o'clock, talking about what kind of food they'd be, are going to eat before a meeting. So the consistency does not make sense. And anybody can disagree with me if you want, but I would tell you as citizens, go back and watch 12 city council meetings and see what you think. And if you will business, hash yourself, would you come here?
I think we need to stop making excuses. Four years, no four days. This city needs business, and we need to make this city grow. I moved here since 2017, and this city is still the same. I'm a small business owner, I know how to bring business, I know very well what's the challenge business going through. And again, my accent, it doesn't mean anything. I know how to get this done, and if I get elected and the bet's not done, I don't need you guys to vote for me. For being city council, it's not nothing for me, I just want to help. And I want to bring, and I have a business, I'm a successful business owner, and I think we can make it. My wife has great job, and this is what I want to do. And I'm counting on you to change, to bring the change to this city. Thank you so much.
We're opening the door apparently to everyone having something to say about retail, so I'd like to participate, because since I've been on council, the thing that I do is see a problem and then try to find a solution. And I bring people to the table who will participate in coming up with solutions. Among the proposals I had was the Blue Ribbon Economic Development Committee. There were 13 business people and residents who participated in this committee. They met for eight months, they were only going to meet for six, but they asked if they could meet for another two months. I don't believe that the leadership of the Chamber of Commerce was on that committee, they didn't ask to participate in the committee, and they ought to have, because it would have been really helpful for there to be a cooperative basis occurring here. We did learn lots of important information. There was a report in September of 2022 that was released to the public, and we are currently implementing all of those ideas for, for bringing in retail to Commerce City. There is a tour for site selectors coming up next month. There is a possibility of a new kind of small-ish grocery store for the north. There are many things occurring, which is really exciting. Someone was speaking about small towns and those that have main tracks such as Inglewood or Erie. Well, that also includes Derby, of course, and we are revitalizing that as well. Tomorrow, there is a giant event for Hispanic Heritage Month that will be held in Derby. We're doing lots of improvements in Derby, there's new lighting coming in, there's new activity coming in. We're hoping that we can employ those suggestions that were made in 2010 to be employed today. I think that Commerce City is on the cusp of a lot of great things, because there's a lot of people who care. So I hope that you will support me, because I am committed to seeing Easter. Thank you.
Okay, the next question is for everyone. What would your approach be regarding mental health for students? Be specific, especially when it comes to school shootings.
That question is a very loaded question, because of the fact that when I went to school, our drills were nuclear drills, where we got under the desk and put our hands over our head and everything. Now they go for active shooting drills in the school. I was on the youth commission, and the youth commission did a survey with all the youth. There were nine girls and two boys on the youth commission that they actually asked them, what would you like to, as a youth commission, do in the next year to have a project? School safety, shootings, and violence against women were the three things that were their top three choices. None of those choices came to fruition. If I told you what came to fruition, you would be upset. Talk to me after the meeting, and I will tell you exactly what is done. And as, but as city council, our first job is to protect our citizens. And our two most citizens that we need to protect are the elderly and the young. If we aren't watching out for them, we aren't doing our job. And that is what I do with Senior Hub every day, VOA every day. I work with both of those agencies, and they're agent agencies. That's what I did on the youth commission before I was taken off. So if you want to know where my heart is, those are the agencies where my heart is. And I, those in the middle will be able to take care of themselves. Thank you.
Regarding mental health, we, we need to support our school district in providing more mental health services. We need more officers in our schools. Our kids are afraid of going to school. Our kids should never feel that way to be afraid of going anywhere. If you dress wrong, if you walk wrong, if you act wrong, you're going to be attacked, you're going to be bullied. This goes down to, when was the last time you guys called the police, the police either showed up, half hour, four or five, they didn't show up at all? Right? We need more officers on the street. That's, that is the bottom line. Okay? I'm a retired sergeant, okay? I understand the issues when it comes to law enforcement, okay? And we can't blow our money on law enforcement, but Mr. Bullock was right, our citizens come first, the safety of our kids. Our kids can't even walk to school without being in fear. That's a problem. And we need to come together as a community and solve them, and we need to solve it quickly. Thank you.
We need good, competent, stable officers, is what we need in life. We don't need any loose cannons.
I got an experience on this subject, like I remember a bad fire call we had where young kids were killed, and we brought in resource officers. Everybody that was unseen had to go to their class, and we lost some firefighters over that, and they quit. But then, here's the problem, we pretty much forced everybody to go, and that was a mistake. We should have only, the people that wanted to go should have gone, because the people that didn't want to go, basically said, you know, I didn't have a problem until after I went to this class, now I got a problem. So it's, it's something you don't want to force on somebody, but you need to have the service available. Sometimes it's just, a school shooting, I would think that the school would have resource officers around to take care of that, but they don't, I think the city should step up and take care of it. It's all.
It's very tough when it comes to mental health. My youngest daughter's a senior in high school right now, and every morning, as I'm praying for my breakfast, I just pray that God watches over her, you know, and keeps everybody, you know, safe beginning of the day. But it comes down to, is, you know, parents and making sure you're paying attention to what your kids are doing, what they're watching, what they're listening to. I remember when I was young, and we always had DARE programs, you know, something to look up to cops with. You know, today all we hear is the bad things that cops do, you know, we see bad videos all over the internet, on these social platforms. You know, we need to start doing more positive videos, and give some, you know, give these kids a reason to look up to cops like I did when I was younger. It's tough being a cop these days, you know? I see what these officers go through, they're disrespected, just like any other, you know, authority, vigor in, in this world. And us as parents, we need to be on their side, you know? When our kids are doing wrong, we can't be afraid to punish them, you know? Go back to, you know, I understand people don't like discipline with their kids these days, but, you know, back in the day, a good knock inside the head, you know, knocked you right, you know? And today it's like, you know, it kind of falls on us as parents, we're too afraid to, you know, to sit down and talk with our kids and get to the root of the problem, you know? And if we listen to our kids and we pay attention to what's going on, that's good for mental health. You know, back when I was younger too, we had more like gifted and talented classes, you know, different things that make you feel good for being different, for being creative. We don't have that these days. So any kid that's different, has other issues going on in school, they get bullied for it, you know, because they don't know how to express it, whether they dress different. Some people have different creative ways of going about their lives, you know? But if we don't have programs for these, these youths to, to express those feelings, that, there's, there's no outlet for you, you kind of break, you kind of snap. And that's where a lot of this stuff... And that's where a lot of this stuff comes down to, is just talking, reaching out to the kids, reaching out to the schools, giving them what they need to be successful. And if I'm elected, that's what I plan to do. I plan to work with the community, with the schools, and with the young youth, because that's what we got. That's our future. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we need to collaborate more with the police department and bring more officers in the school. I think that would help, and we need also to really protect our children. Thank you so much.
First, let me tell you that the city council approved a million dollars for the budget of the police department that they did not ask for to hire more police officers. So they have had that in the conference for the past two years to make use of. Also, we have a new substation coming at the corner of 104th and Potomac, which will make it possible for the officers to do their work in the north without having to drive down to the south in order to file their reports. So that will be helpful as well, will have more activity. Now, about the important part, which is shootings in schools. This is actually a really powerful, powerful topic for me. I was executive director of Women Against Gun Violence for three years. I met so many families who had lost a loved one to gun violence, whether it was suicide or homicide or negligence. If you own a gun or a rifle, you damn well better have a lock on it. If you keep it in your car, you are part of the crime. You know how often these cars are broken into? They use those weapons for some of these crimes. Don't leave your guns in the car. Bring them inside. Please, don't allow children to get access to weapons ever, ever. Now, it's one thing if they learn how to shoot growing up, but then we have the problem of mental health. We know that 27J has tried to do all they can for mental health because, but they don't have enough therapists to help with it. That's a problem. In addition, we passed a bond, everyone, we passed it two years ago for officers in the schools. So that was done. We all paid for that.
27J or District 14?
That was 27J.
So what about District 14?
Adams 14 is working with the police department. That, we paid for it in a bond, so we're paying extra taxes in order for this to occur in 27J. So Adams 14 would have to do the same thing, would have to raise taxes in order to...
Well, that adds to the school district. It doesn't have to do with city council?
No, the school district put the bond forward, not the city council. However, knowing the issues regarding demographics, the city is working with Adams 14 to help provide officers in the schools in Adams 14 because...
My son is a security specialist at District 14 Adams City High School. Commerce City does not respond because there's some contract issues.
Yes, you know, we had that come before us just last week, and there is a difference of opinion apparently between our staff and their staff. I can't speak to it because I haven't been part of that discussion. But you're absolutely right. It is critical for it to happen. Adams 14, Adams City High School had an awesome demonstration at the school, a protest. Everyone walked out. I was there for that. Absolutely, we are trying to do something about it, but the Commerce City Police Department doesn't just automatically patrol schools. There has to be an agreement between the school district and the police department, and there has to be an exchange of some factor.
Can you see where that's concerning? Can you see where that's concerning?
Oh, absolutely. I can see where it's concerning.
We want you to acknowledge that. Commerce City is Commerce City.
Oh, I agree. Trust me. I just said it. This matters a lot to me. I agree.
For 27J?
No!
Don't forget about District 14. I'm going to stop now, but don't forget about District 14, please.
No way. I do not forget about Adams 14.
Susan, just hold it up.
I'm sorry. I was getting questions harder, and I wanted to address it.
Something else to point out too, as you're all talking about a therapist, not a psychologist. Would you actually need a psychologist, not a psychiatrist? A psychologist can find out the more deeper rooted problems and work it out from there. And perhaps they'll refer to a therapist further on down the line and let them handle the child, young adult, like we're calling them. But in school, to find out the root of a psychologist, not a psychiatrist, there's a difference. I know I can't spell it because it's a dictionary, but there's a difference between psychologist and psychiatrist.
So to clarify, I couldn't hear anything. Being proactive is definitely part of what we're doing. If we're just going police, and that's after the fact, it's not going to help us with the issue if it happens. And I can't imagine what it would happen if we had a shooting in one of our schools and they were just like this. There's no real good way to come back from that. I mean, to be able to handle some of those still, I start with that. So being proactive is the normal thing we do here. In regards to the way we do it, I think we put not so much police, but you have psychologists, secretaries. It's beginning of the parents' council. I wasn't overly popular when I was a kid. I was bullied quite a bit. I was a big guy, but I still got bullied. I got very frustrated. Unfortunately, I grew up in a place where I was more terrified of my school, of my parents, than I had screwed up with the, than dealing with the school being, being happening. But it's, it's been changing over the years here, and it's sad in that respect. So having a relationship between the school and the parents and trying to show them where their kids have some issues underlying, where they're being not included and they're getting left out and frustrated. Okay, that pent-up aggression, anger, anger, to the point of wanting to not do something to that effect. In regards to the, sorry, I read, there's some word, I read about this. The accountability with the weapons, the state has to be proactive with that. And if you have a weapon, you have to be secure. If you're not, then you, the person who has the weapon is actually held accountable for whatever they do. And the state did pass that recently, and very positive over that in the sense that it's not, the parents accountable. You're not going to see a kid go and steal his parent's weapon, and not have the parents held accountable. So I think that will help us keep parents from just not, not even so worried about the aftereffects of what may happen to their child feels that they're excluded and they're not, they're not ready to go, to handle that in a positive way. That's, that's, thank you.
First off, I agree that we'd start with school resource officers, having, having the staff there on site, well-trained who are there that can relate to the kids and not make it a combative relationship is a huge start. Since I've been on council, we've always been in a plus-ten situation, where we're always approved ten extra officers from what we, what the number says we should have. I'll tell you, we've never got that number because no one's, we're not applying. The applications aren't coming in the same way. State control was down to 172 groups, now they're 800. And no one was applying. That's starting to change. It's starting to change in Commerce City. It's starting to change in law enforcement. We want the people here in Commerce City, we have pay benefits comparable. It's a tough place to police because of the north and the south. You know, if you get a level zero call and you're in the south, it's eight minutes even with lights and sirens. You see it up here just because of the distance. And so, it's a challenge being up in the south that we're going to have to continue working. I think our north center for the police department is much better than our neighboring building that we have here from their accessibility, from their ability to respond from a location that we're at. I think that's the first start. But when it comes to mental health, we have to address this as a community. I would tell you with my two daughters, eight and six, social media scares me tremendously. And I think that has triggered a lot of mental health issues. But I think it starts first in the home of the parents, you know? I thought it was a great point in this trivia brada about sitting down and talking to your kids and making them feel worth it, worth something. I think that goes a long way to transition to school. And then places like South on 27J, but I know Adams 14 is doing this as well. They have groups, they get together and talk about these things with the school. I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be lying if I knew therapists, whatever, I don't know their title, but schools are trying to do that. It's really hard to bring these professionals in as well. And so, I think there's a lot of good intent, but it's harder to deliver than we expect. But mental health, I think, is a community thing that we can, we can start to address by building good partnerships.
Well, sir, I feel that it can use a, a therapist can handle the physical carrying on, the acting out, but a psychologist would find out what the deep rooted problem really is, where it comes from. What's childhood, or they're being bullied in school, or whatever in this area. They can go from there and figure out how they can kind of streamline. And I'm not saying spend all your time on one child. They have a police where you can refer to a psychologist, and they can help that person maybe straighten out. And it won't be a crazy that would want to go shoot Sandy Hook or Calhoun or anything like that. I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I want to talk to you later on, man.
First and foremost, I'll say Sol Ray Ashley, Stewart Middle School kid who ended up shooting himself because his ex-girlfriend or whatever said, "Go shoot yourself." As someone who's actually seen a psychologist, who's seen a psychiatrist, who's seen a counselor myself because of the service that I've served and the things that I've seen, I gotta say, it works. It works. Mental health these days, I mean, obviously, you know, I hear, I hear some of my fellow candidates up here who said that, you know, mental health back in the days used to get a butt-whupping and, and, you know, pretty good. Obviously, we're in new times. And for me, you know, like, you know, sometimes a child's issues that they're running through needs to be validated, just needs to be validated, regardless of how awful it may sound or whatever the case may be, it just has to be validated. You know, most recently, just last month, you know, the last district accountability committee for Adams 14, I put my application in to be part of that committee. So regardless if I'm on city council or not, my goal is to be on that committee to include 27J's district accountability committee because that's where I feel like my, my heart really lies. Kids are important. We've had so many issues as it was, you know, with regards to just the shootings that's occurred around the state or even just outside of the state, just out of our country. And so, I would look into, to answer that specific question, I would definitely look into providing some form of certified individual at each grade level to see what, how, how can we actually put them in? And most recently, you know, I am talking to folks within Adams 14 and 27J to try to help build that bridge all in all. Thank you.
So as a Columbia resident, in my junior year, Columbia happened. We still deal with the same challenges that happened prior before Facebook. There's still issues at Columbia. Saul's impacted, my generation's impacted, which is being impacted by school shootings. When we talk about Saul, my daughter was in middle school with Saul. He was a gifted and talented. So this hits home. They're a gifted and talented class together. And so, committing suicide is an issue because of some social media bullying. What I propose as a city council member is that there's, there are things that we can do as a city council, right? One is that a community, a school is a reflection of your community, right? And so, we have to think through, and when I talk about economic development, the idea of having gathering spaces for our children matters because it matters because they're a part of community, they're a part of something special, but also impacts mental health. It helps with mental health when they're around with their friends and they're talking about the issues. That's why we need a place to gather. If my daughter was 14, there's nowhere to go to hang out with her friends, right? I love the Rex, and I think they do an amazing job. But at some point, how do we have an angle that's going at it? There's no place to, don't check the cheese, right? Which I went over to high school, and that actually was a part of the shooting as well. So I have seen it firsthand, and as I worked at Marbella High School, he'd never been in a lockdown, which is students, and you're in charge of the students. It's his home, right? During the lockdown, and it's unfortunate it still happens now. Mental health is a key issue. The other piece is that we can partner with the school districts to apply for state grants. That's why having a council member that's connected to the state legislature that's understanding what funding is available, we can jointly park together. This happens across the nation. This happens across places I mentioned, National League of Cities as an agency in DC that help you have these opportunities to do together. Last is that we can be a model. Mental health is not just in the school, but it's social media. And as leaders in our community, we should model what social media should look like and not be bullied on the air as well.
All right, due to timing, we have, it's 8:30, and we would like to have each candidate have a closing in two minutes. We do have a handful of more questions. As a chamber, we will put together and compile those questions. If you will share with the candidates, and if they choose to respond, we will send that information out. But I do encourage you to, if you want more information, go to the city website. And you can look up some information on the candidates. So we'll start off with, on this end here, we're going to do a, well, actually, well, actually, it's...
Oh, we've already...
All right, so not paper scissors.
You're ready. Go ahead.
All right, yeah, we said, so let's go ahead and start off with the two minutes closing, and then we'll just have a closing after.
Pass the book on you there, Renee. Toss the ball, toss the ball, catch it, get it from the ground.
Sometimes it's good to be first, sometimes it's good to be last. I don't mind being either one. Okay, I'm a Rotarian. In the Rotary, we have a four-way test. First, is it the truth? That's the number one. Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendship? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? That is our four-way test. And then we say, servers above self. That is a Rotarian. That is where I've been since 2013, when Sean Ford made me come to Rotary meeting, and I haven't left since then because I love being a Rotarian. Now I'm going to ask the question, are you better off today than you were four years ago? It is time for a change. I want to be a mayor. I don't want a mayor that's in city council with his wife. I think I'm the best experience for this job. I was 14 years on city council. I was 10 years on the House of Attorney. I was over 10 years. We started the youth commission. Me and JD Carson started the youth commission. So all of these organizations and everybody counts, I've been on. In the National League of Cities, I was an education level. We taught the classes. On the CML, I was the president of the policy committee. I ran it in this state for one year. Everything that everybody else wants to accomplish, I have been there. I want to be a mayor because I know what we can do in this city. With a good council, we can turn this city around, and the next four years will be a better four years. We can't say it'll be the best, but it will be a better. Please, make me your mayor for Commerce City. Thank you.
First off, I'd like to thank everyone who attended tonight. I want to be your mayor. Yes, I have the experience as Renee does, okay? I haven't been part of this historical society who came to the council to ask for a million dollars to buy a house, okay? I haven't been on council before that has stayed extra nights and had to pay money back to the city and said that was a mistake, okay? I believe in partnerships. I believe in working with... I believe in partnerships. I believe in working with all of our districts. I believe the north and south is one. We need to work as one, we need to come together as one. Back to the police, for people who don't know, it takes almost a year for a person to go through the academy and get onto the street by themselves. Additionally, if they're a resource officer, they have to go through certification before to work with youth, to work with mental health issues, okay? With being on the school board previously in Adams Fourteen, it comes without the money too. Money is tight. We need to get grants to help kids. And it starts at home. It really does. You know, there should be no reason why we have a shooting at Santiago Hills and Donald's when kids are carrying guns. That goes to the, back to, people aren't safe in Commerce City. Look at our roads, look at our city. I plan to bring big businesses up here to help lower taxes, okay? Cronky, okay, Cronky wants to swap us land. What has Cronky done for this city? I wasn't on the council, I approved the stadium and the rent for a dollar a year and the city's not getting any revenue from the stadium. Not one penny. So what is Cronky doing for the city? I would like to sit down with Cronky's people and work out a deal. I wanna be your mayor. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for showing up tonight too. I learned a lot from listening to all of you and it's enlightening. Anyway, I'm honored for city council because I care about the community. I've been there before. I think I have a lot to bring to the table as far as making our city run smooth and a lot in transportation issues. I believe we can get things started with some businesses. Yes, it's not gonna be easy. That's what our community needs and that's my main purpose and love for me.
I am the right incoming candidate for War Three. I know I don't have the background or the resume that everyone up here does, but I'm a fresh mind. I'm ready to use it. What happens if I don't get elected? That's something I ask myself every day since I started this campaign. I'm afraid. I'm afraid for my family. I'm afraid for my community. Our city's leadership should be working together to solve issues. We as a community need. We shouldn't be working on our own personal agendas. We should be working together as a group to unify the city and to be everyone of them. If I'm elected, I will work hard for War Three and the entire community of Commerce City to ensure that all of our voices are heard, all our needs are met, and all of Commerce City is safe and a thriving community for all of our families. Fifteen years ago, my wife and I chose to raise our family in Commerce City because we saw the potential in a growing community. We need to help Commerce City grow responsibly and safely. We need to act now. Right then, raise Trillo for War Three. Thank you.
Well, this is my moment and I want you to listen to me. I just have one simple question. When things are going bad, what's the solution? Or when things are going, it's not going well, what's the solution? Change. We have to change. Okay, four years is not four days. As a small business owner, I know how to create a business here. I know how to work with small businesses. We can keep, sell tax here, we can keep the tax revenue here. So, this is, we can create jobs. So, let's do this. Let's work together and bring business here in Commerce City, especially in War Four. Thank you so much.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. It's a Friday, you know, where else would you be but at a forum for candidates, right? But, I do wanna draw attention to the flyer that I have here on one side. It is my commitments. But on the other side, more importantly, it's a list of things I've proposed and won approval of. Such as, I mentioned earlier, the Blue River and Economic Development Committee, Environmental Consultants, Environmental Policy Advisory Committee, Town Halls in each ward to bring the city to you, campaign finance reporting. You can go to the website and see any gifts over four hundred dollars within forty-eight hours, I mean, yeah, within forty-eight hours. Metro District Listening Session to hear all viewpoints and generate options and alternatives. There must be something. A million dollars in ARF funds that I mentioned that would go to a grants team. Strict oil and gas regulations that led to the other sites disappearing. And on that note, I am concerned that as these oil and gas sites are coming into Commerce City at the northern end, that it will open the door to the other sites returning. They still own those mineral rights and they may still come back. So the makeup of the city council is incredibly important over the next four years. It could open the door to fracking under the neighborhoods in North Commerce City. I am eager to have the chance to again, help neighborhoods like Buffalo Highlands who have forty-eight homes that had construction defects. We have been in there with the builder, Lennar, and the city. I want to be able to continue that kind of help for the residents of Commerce City. It means a lot to be able to help you. I think that part of the job is really important. Thank you so much for the opportunity and I hope you'll consider voting for me. And please, pick up this flyer to read more. Thank you.
Again, I wanna thank you all for coming tonight. It's very important to us and I've spent a lot of time just in positions I have now, trying to be a part of things and empathy is one of the worst things that we feel in our community here. When I grew up, my dad always taught me that if you have a problem with something, you need to spend the time and text you, try to figure out how to fix it. You can't just complain and that's why I'm here. I have problems with the way things are going and I wanna fix it. My job, as I said in the very beginning, will not be to push my own personal agendas as to what I want for the city. It's to listen to you, find out what you want and how I can make that happen for you. Very, very easily accessible. I'm very accessible. I enjoy talking to people and finding out what it is that's going on for you and what I can do to take care of that. If you would like to me, I will spend time and I'm not the guy to quit. I will fight and fight and fight to get things done the right way. I'm doing it right now for my community here and I will do it for all of you. I hope that you will vote for me here at Free Supreme Court City Council and thank you so much.
I too wanted to say thank you for coming out tonight. You know, these things can be never happening as a candidate because you never know what to expect when you're walking. But I think this was a great question, it was very relevant to our community and to our next four years and our future. And I think, I just wanna reiterate why I thoroughly enjoyed representing this community and what my priorities are. Commerce City is one of the most valuable cities in our entire state, not just our state but the Rocky Mountain region. I see it every day. I run the freight and trucking program for the whole state of Colorado and I see that data. We drive this state and we should be proud of that. And I'll always be proud of that and I make sure that everybody will not say negative word about Commerce City or finding the area. But the things we do need to get better at so we can continue to be proud of this city is public safety. We have a new chief, we have investments into our police department and now we need to start seeing these results. The next thing is the transportation infrastructure connecting the north and south, but also working with C-DOT and the training companies and looking at opportunities to create an off-ramp or an on-ramp on the I-76 so you can avoid the Union Pacific train. We can do an on-ramp as well right next to the Cat Killer or the Bobcat Killer. That would eliminate all of the one-hundred-and-fourth and Highway eighty-five issues going westbound. Opportunities for our children in education and recreation. We are a growing city and our recreation department at times doesn't have enough space for our children to participate, mine included. We really need to focus on our economy and the economic development. But what our goal, or what my goal is and what our job is on city council is to allow our citizens to thrive. And that comes with a holistic approach for all the things that I just talked about. You need to be able, it gets where you're going in a safe manner. And our children need to grow up in a place that they can be proud of and a place that they can continue to give back to as they age. Want to come back here after school or work or whatever they go on to. So with that, I would really appreciate your vote for my reelection and I hope you serve us for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you guys, everyone, for actually coming out tonight. You know, one of the things I did hear was about conflict of interest, right? So, you got a mayor candidate who's running, who's part of the executive director for the Chamber of Commerce, actually wanted to be on the city council. So you might as well look at that, look that into with the fact you've got Steve Douglas running for city council and of course you got Krista Doug with Susan Council currently. Just wanna make sure that that's all clear. You know, it's something you always get with me, that I've always been honest with you on, is transparency. You get what you see. I have no personal agenda unlike others who actually do. Just look at the campaign contributions. If you're not voting for me, all I ask you to do is look at the campaign contributions. It's pretty slick when you actually have someone's name next to a campaign contribution. But you can actually do a Google search, look up on LinkedIn to figure out they're from Che homes. Five thousand dollars there, a thousand dollars here, five hundred dollars here from Che homes, from Metro House Home Builders Association. Same folks that actually disagreed with the moratorium that we have for Metro District we have in place now. So I just wanna throw that out there. You know, for me, I'm looking at continuing to work with schools, continuing to work on public safety. I know we have a ton of potholes. I know we have issues in the core city as well. I get it. But that's what I'm here for. That's where I wanna make sure that my voice and that your voice is being heard, whether it's good or bad or indifferent. I'm here to help you where I can. Part of my military background is talking about excellence, all we do serves before self and integrity first. I have integrity. There are others who may not. I was gonna bring up partnerships on this, you know, but you know, I see my time is short. But I would love to partner. We love to see partnerships occur throughout the board. I know we have problems with Adams Fourteen. I know we have problems with Twenty-Seven J. I know we have problems with the Chamber of Commerce. I know we have problems with the Fire Department. There's so many issues that are occurring that needs to be resolved and that's what I'm here to do, to drive my best to help. Thank you.
Mr. Kim, I need to say thank you very much because you were the person to push for the speed bonds in the schools. And because of that, maybe we're gonna stop a bit of kids crossing the streets. Thank you.
So with my time, I'm gonna encourage you to look at the campaign contributions. I have received money from partners. It's important to know that. If I don't have money from partners, I can't reach across the city as at-large candidate. I can't talk to all the neighbors across the city as at-large candidate. I'm Charles Dukes, I chose to run for at-large, not just for four, not just for three, but for the whole city of Commerce City. When I think about my closing statements, I think about Mayor who lives next to Pioneer Park. And over the last two years, her car got broke into, her house got drive-by shootings, her fence has been hit and ran over. And I've talked to Mayor and said, "Mayor, why don't you stay?" And she says, "I love this city." And that's why I'm running. I love this city. It is joy for the city and love for the city. It's resonating across all of Commerce City, Adams Heights, from Jackmans and Adams Heights, from Anne and Riverrun, from Joe to the gallery at Reunion. People love this city, but you do have to ask your question, are we better off now than we were four years ago? Are we having leadership that's gonna find solutions to the problem? Not just identify the problem, point fingers. At some point, finger points back at you, right? That's what you learn in grade school, right? And so that's what I wanna ask yourself. Those are the questions you ask yourself. If you want a city council at-large member who finds solutions to the problem, I'm that candidate. If you want someone who's got his experience working in city government, social systems, I'm that candidate. If you want someone who has relationships with partners that will bring to Commerce City, all of Commerce City, I'm that candidate. I think about Isaac who's, his face lights up when he hears about Thirteenth and the snack baskets and the bowling alley. I want that back. I'm that candidate at-large who's gonna help bring that back. Last, this is a new horizon. Our story's not complete. We just only begun. It's a new day. So, say hello to partnerships. Say hello to collaboration. Say hello to mental health in our schools. Say hello to so many things that have been passed by our last number of years. And let's write these next chapters together as a whole community. I'm Charles Dukes, running for city council at large. Please follow me on Facebook at Charles for City Council, Charles for City Council. Thank you.
Hey, let's talk about the other good subject, the homeless. You all say Commerce City is all one city, we're united and down there. How come we're putting up with them down there and you don't have any of them up here? So all you candidates that are, how hard do you have towards that?
Yeah, I'll look at that with you as well.
About this, you better be thinking about that because that's a real lot of money in this outside.
Well, and we can talk about the weeds as well. You know, we can talk about the weeds on eighty-five.
All right, so just so you know, this was a question that came up and it was part of the questions that we're gonna be putting out to the candidates. They can't answer, I'm gonna call them out too, so if they choose to do so. And I wanna thank you guys all for being here tonight and Susan mentioned spending your Friday night here, you know, we're all sleeping. But anyway, thank you all, the candidates, thank you guys for being here. Thank you to our staff, our community members, our staff here. Also, if you have any questions, you know, we are just, we're not advocating for anyone. We're just here, we want, we put this on and let you guys all decide if you guys all have any questions. But go to the website and if you have any questions, there are all the contact information's on there. And if you choose to stay this evening, you're welcome to, but we will be putting tables and chairs away too while we're doing that. Again, have a good evening. Thank you guys so much.